Good evening, I'd like to call the Gochee City Council Meeting to Order tonight, Tuesday, June 21st, 2022 at 6:30 PM. I ask that you please silence your cellphones and any other electronic devices. Also, I'd like to ask our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, to lead us in the prayer, and Councilman Adam College to lead us in the pledge.
Welcome to the Council, we bow before tonight, we give you honor and praise. We thank you, Lord, that you're an everlasting God, that your love is unfailing. And, Lord, tonight I pray for unity and discernment in this meeting as we conduct city business. And I also ask for your continued protection over our first responders, our police, fire, our public works, all our city staff, Lord, and our citizens. God, we just thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice on Calvary's cross for our sins, and we ask all this in his name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Our pledge is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to our Agenda Order Approval. Do we have any changes? Ms. Shantsey?
Yes, Mayor. The first changes, Tasty Thursday, there's a typo on the announcement, should reflect it's June 30th. I need to remove item number one, the abatement at 2019 South Bayden, the property that we're claiming. And I need to add an amendment to consent agenda item number five, that you should have provided by Josh.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Gillett. Councilman Gillett's joined the call. Okay, any other changes? Do we have a motion to approve the Agenda Order Approval with the changes by Ms. Shantsey?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by our City Manager, Ms. Shantsey.
Yes, pooping into summer, around-the-world basketball tournament ages 10 through 16 will be June 29th, starting at 10:00 AM until 12:00 PM at Beaco Park. Tasty Thursday will be June 23rd, beginning at 11:00 AM at the Seminole Law Property. Training around the summer, engaging fitness program will be July 6th, starting at 10:00 AM until 12:00 PM at Beaco Parks. And Gochee's Farmers Market will be July 9th, on Saturday, starting at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at George Martin City Park.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. That brings us to our presentation agenda. We have a presentation by our Police Chief, David Bever, regarding the Police Department at dates.
So, this is something that I'm trying to start, or starting with the Police Chief, but I'm going to let each director, different director on the second meeting of each month kind of stand up and tell you what's going on in their department, and predict to you what they're working on, or however they want to do it, and I thought it would just be good to keep everybody informed, and so we start with Chief Bever.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey.
All right, well, thank you, I wanted to take the time, I noticed some questions or concerns regarding the Police Department, and what I want to focus on is, where did the department was at when I took over? Were empty day, and the future goes for my department. Maybe she's at the end of March of 2020 when I took over, where low staffing, all-time high, low morale, partly caused by the low staffing. And we saw spike in violent crime, like the free shooting.
Councilman Gillett, can you mute your phone, please?
Okay.
So, with low staffing, we had 11 vacancies. Issue since 2016 is we continuously, we're having a hard time finding people to get into office or something. Past two years, we have an average anywhere between five to seven openings. But we had to constantly use officers to work overtime to fill in short staffing on shifts. Low morale, overwork during low staffing, like I said, we had COVID. Just being shorthand, anybody took off for any reason, you had to call somebody in on overtime, and burn them out. And officers' perception of the difference to their needs, mainly caused by generational differences between the leadership, and a perception of lack of communication, concern among officers or others, didn't know what was going on with the department. The crime, this is the last five years, I picked two categories, there have been recent concerns, burgries and egg and vinegar sauce. So, the green line is your burglaries, and your blue line is your egg and vinegar sauce. So, as you see, there is a downward trend on egg and vinegar sauce in our city today. Same thing that we did with burglaries. There was a dramatic decrease in 2020, and that was mainly caused by COVID. Everybody shut down, everybody was at home, had less crime. Started picking back up in 2011, and halfway through this year, we're still not up to where we were last year, that's why it's chronic. So, where are we at today? Staffing. One of the first things I did was try to increase our recruiting efforts. What's helped us a lot was last year's budget, proven to pay scales for officers, allow us to attract officers from other agencies. Today, I hired seven experienced officers with over 60 years combined experience, and three new officers who will have to go to the academy, and I currently sit with one open. Morale, we have improved morale. One of the first things I did in our police station, the administrative wing, it's kind of locked off, and I've given everybody access, they rekeyed the whole department, and all their keys are allowed back to my office. So, they have access to me, the department staff, and everything needed. Then I'm also seeking input from the employees, with their needs, to do their job, and what they're looking forward. Responses to crime, started overtime details, targeting those areas that we had despite burglaries or despite violent crime. Also partnered with Mississippi Bureau of Narcotics, where they were focusing more of their efforts countywide on specific gang members that we've identified that were responsible for this violent crime, where they've been seen on shootings. And we have increased our park patrols, very supportive of parks, and especially Beaco Park, it's valuable to the community, it gives children something to do rather than being left up to their own devices. So, future goes for my department, maintain staffing, one way through career development, make sure they have a team of education that helps them do their job once they get out of the academy. Proper equipment for officers, some of our stuff is outdated. Representative Palazzo picked up a project where we will be replacing the radio systems, our body cameras, and our car cameras, if fully funded through Congress. That is over $500,000 to do so. Currently, our radio systems and dispatch are donated to us from Pasadena PD, and it was called for that. Also, I want to create an accredited department where officers are probably looked at, and we are submitting for a grant right now, to pay for accreditation, for the accreditation fees, the training, overtime, and the equipment we need to be a full accredited department. Maintain high morale, one way I want to do this is to rebrand the department, to do us. I think the visual change will help change the mood at the agency of the officers. Coming up with a formalized Officer Award Program, maybe these nice accommodations for any work they do, their day-to-day operations, basically, nice and important work. On top of Officer of the Year that we do every year, I want to add Subunit Employee of the Year, and Supervisor of the Year, which currently we employ 11 subrare employees at our department, so I think that will help spotlight where it may be too. And the promotion ceremonies, we just kind of started this, with me and the captains, and we just personally promoted, and the feedback I got from that was very positive, so we're going to continue this on with our sergeants and attendants that we just promoted in a couple weeks. And I want to develop an officer wellness program to help with officers mentally and physically stay in shape, and physically sound, and make a sound, so their lives, long-term solutions to responsive to crime, I want to change to a totally just basis. Basically, that's identifying a small percentage of the population that's responsible for all the crime, right? And we want to make their lives difficult in the city of Gochee, so they go somewhere else and do what they want to. Want to increase officer visibility, one way I'm looking at doing this is light bars on top of patrol cars, again, hook up where corner lights are low and blue, and steady, so when they're driving to neighborhoods at night, doing their business checks, publicly seeing, you know, instead of just a set of headlights, because I know the mood is. And I want to increase community involvement with our department, one way, social media, apparently all we have is Facebook page, I want to expand that, Sam, you're the one. You got Instagram, Twitter, TikTok, each generation primarily goes on one of those applications, so we want to try to broaden the audience. And improve access to supervisors, a few ways, I'll hand, in the lobby, you will be posting what lieutenant's on duty, what sergeant's on duty each day, and on top of that, we'll be giving supervisor, they have a cell phone, it's going to be, where's the senior supervisor on duty, it's going to have on him, so the public can call him directly, for anybody who needs direct contact, you know, I have to question, who's on duty today? It's one direct member. And continue gaining input, other community needs, problem community, it's kind of hard sometimes to know what they want from my department, so having their input, that's awesome.
Thank you, Chief Bever. Do we have any comments from council?
I think it was the first presentation, this is something that I wanted to see, and you made it happen. I've noticed the uptick in morale and everything with the department, I've been really impressed that you took the position. To have a good leader, you have to be approachable. You are approachable, you're a nice guy, and you can really tell that you don't only want to improve the department, but each staff member as an individual, and that goes a long way. So, I think over the next couple of years, and into your future, we're going to continuously see a positive uptick in the department. Thank you.
Yeah, I respect on that, you're doing a great job, I can see the improvement, and a lot of the issues that I have in the south side of Gochee, it's just pretty much, you know, slowed all the way down, so y'all did a great job on that, thank you.
Councilman Gillett, do you have any comment on the presentation?
At this time, thanks, David, appreciate your effort, everything you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman College?
I just appreciate the community involvement, that's key to any police department or municipality, is the public understanding and knowing that the police are there for them, and you're not there just to, they're there to interact with the residents of this city, the majority of them being kids, especially if you have Beaco Park and stuff, and it changes the mentality to where they're not scared to talk to you. And that's an important factor, we've got issues up in north Gochee also, that we're trying to work towards, I say sort of rationale, so I appreciate all the efforts you're putting into it, I think we're going to see great improvements here, in addition to what we're already seeing in the near future, but thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation, appreciate it.
Councilman Alvin?
I appreciate you sharing your vision. People need to know what you're all about, and I think they're learning it. There's some good positive changes I've seen there, and I appreciate that. I think it's paramount, like Adam said, interaction with the community, and our groups in the community is a key to success in that position, and I appreciate your vision.
Thank you. Chief Bever, I just, you know, to say I'm ecstatic is an understatement, because nine years ago, July 1st, we did not have full staffing at most, and we continued to struggle with that due to pay budget constraints and everything. That's kudos to you, our City Manager, working and seeing the need of our public safety at budget time, to give that to you all, not just you, but also the Fire Department and all of our staff. She didn't, she tried to not leave one employee behind, that was her deal when we first hired her, and she has been committed to that, so, Ms. Shantsey, thank you for that, but thank Chief for continuing to lecture employees be heard, because you can tell the difference. But me, as the mayor, when I go meet with other mayors, or I'm at a community meeting, now to be the one that's not there with other elected officials saying, "We're getting your employee, we're getting your employee," to now, "Mayor, fine, quit taking our employees." It makes you feel good, and Chief, I just want you to know that, it's not just one agency on the coast that has told me what a great job in your leadership, and how blessed we are to have you, it's all of them that I've spoken with, so I just want to wish you well in your continued endeavors, and we're here to support you as a council with Ms. Shantsey, anything you need, we'll be glad to try to accommodate you. Good. Okay, that brings us to our Business Agenda Item Number One, was Tate removed, because it's been cleaned, that brings us to Business Agenda Item Number Two, Consideration for an Abatement at 3517 Rain Tree, Gochee, Mississippi, Edna Kilgore Estate, by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
The Code Enforcement Department is asking council to consider this abatement approval at 3517 Rain Tree. It has been a case of the Code Enforcement Department since January of 2021. Currently, we're under the pressure that the owner, previous owner, deceased, and the remaining occupants left rubbish and trash debris in the yard when they moved. We tried to contact the owner, that's going to be hard, we'll have to pass him into previous owner. The tax assessor's office reflects that the taxes are actually two years to link when, hasn't been redeemed in 2019 or 2020, so therefore, the Code Enforcement Department made a decision to ask for this abatement for the removal of the rubbish, trash, and debris from the property, also to mow and clean if needed. So, we had sent out notices, we posted the notices for the abatement, and of course, the council hearing, and mailed it to the owner, to the proper man of the required law, all reasons necessary, to the previous department, the owner, agents, provide adequate notice, and that City Negotiated intends to enter the property and remove any items that attract and welfare in the neighbors and other residents of the street. The recommendation is, Code Enforcement Office requests the City Council to approve this abatement for the removal of the rubbish, trash, debris, and to mow and clean the property at 3517 Rain Tree in accordance with the Mississippi Code. And if approved, council may charge the cost as a lien against the property, to be collected upon sale of the property, collected through civil proceedings, and you can add $1,500 or 50% for choice to either of the above collection methods. I've included pictures of the property, the postings, parcel information, the case history, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, I also have my fellow officers here tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on Business Agenda Item Number Two? No comments. Do we have a motion by council? And if we have a motion, don't forget to mention the penalty and the assessed, how to assess them and collect them.
I'll make a motion that we approve the abatement for the removal of rubbish, trash, debris, and to mow property at 3517 Rain Tree, in accordance with Mississippi Code annotated, with the cost being placed as a lien against the property and a 50% penalty in, to the above collection methods.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Gillett?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Clean it up.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Ankerson, and your staff, for y'all's continued dedication on working to get this city clean. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to Business Agenda Item Number Three, Consider a Request for a 686-square-foot variance to square footage requirements for an accessory building in an R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 2501 Bayou Bend Road, Gochee, Mississippi, GPC number 22-14-VAR, by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department received this request from Claude Stubbs for a 686-square-foot variance to square footage requirements for accessory building in an R1 low-density single-family residential district. The request property, as said, is the zone of R1, the proposed accessory structure will be, according to the applicant, a 30-by-40 building, equalling, I'm sorry, it says 40 by 40, but I'm pretty sure we agree in the planning department, you can increase that by 40 by 40, so. This says 40 by 40 building, equalling 1,600 square feet. According to the Unified Development Ordinance, lot covers of accessory structure in an R1 district shall not exceed 20% of the rear lot or 50% of the principal structure, whichever is less. So, the applicant is asking to surpass that by 686 square feet. There's an existing 392-square-foot pool house, and 320 specifically cash garage, and a 108-square-foot storage building in the yard, so all these have been calculated, subtracted to that 50%, and that's how the planning department has came up with 686-square-foot variance. So, I've included the definition of variance in the package, I've also included the criteria for approval as outlined in 4.18.4 of the Unified Development Ordinance, that are listed 1 through 4, if you have any questions on those. The Planning Commission recommends the City Council approve the variance presented for a 40-by-30 accessory structure that would have hardy board siding and contingent upon the carport attached to the main structure. To explain that a little further, he had, he attached carports on one side of the cones. I talked to Mr. Stubbs about, he was going to repair the roof on it, I told him that if he actually attached that to the house, it could add square footage to the house, which would turn, add square footage to the 50%, that he would be allowed, so that would decrease the variance number. So, he did attach that, and so that allowed him to decrease that to the 686. If you have any questions further on that, I'll explain it to the committee. The Planning Commission recommends the City Council approve the variance presented, and that the structure would have hardy board siding, contingent upon the carport being attached to the main structure. So, the City Council made a approve the variance request that is presented, approve the variance request with changes, but denied the grant request, I included the X-Files GPC meeting, date 6/22, and the complete package, if you have any questions on it, my best to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments? If we do, you can come to the podium, state your first, last name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Any citizens want to come speak? Three minutes.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if Mr. Stubbs was going to speak to his application, but I guess. My name is Jackie Bertuzzi, I actually represent one of the property owners who has property adjacent to Mr. Stubbs. His address is 5605 Gochee Bank Road, and he actually owns property on two sides of Mr. Stubbs, his house is on one side of it, and then he owns the corner lot, Gochee Bank in the Line End, along with his great nephew, James Wagner, and who else, I think they're all here. This has been to the Planning Commission twice, and the first time that Mr. Stubbs went, he was asking for a 900-square-foot variance, and I think that was when the building was supposed to be 40 by 40. There were some issues that came up in that meeting, and I think he went back and presented a revised application, reducing the size of the building somewhat. There's been a lot of confusion actually over the sizes of the variance, and now it's stated as 686. I think when we were at the Planning Commission back earlier this month, it was down to 286, but I didn't hear any discussion of that tonight. Also, have not heard any discussion of the 20% of the rear lot calculation. Everything that Mr. Ankerson has presumed has been associated with the 50% of the principal structure area, and not the 20% of the rear lot, but your ordinance says that it's not to exceed whichever one of those is less. However, whatever the size of the variance is, the fundamental issue is whether he meets the criteria for the variance, and we submit to you that he does not. You have, I understand, the definition in the package. When Mr. Stubbs presented his first application, and in response to the first question, which deals with the first criteria of whether special conditions and circumstances existed, he answered none that I'm aware of. That was a very correct and honest answer. So, by his own admission, on the original application, he didn't meet the very first criteria. When he came back with his amended application, he did state that special circumstances existed, but the items he talked about really did not justify any special circumstances or criteria. On the second question, whether literal interpretation of the provisions of the ordinance would deprive him of life, commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district, that's a no also. He's subject to the same provisions as every other homeowner in that neighborhood and in that district. On the third question, on his amended application, where it says, "Do special conditions and circumstances result from actions of the applicant?", he said yes. And in order for you to grant this variance, the answer to that has to be no. But he actually was very honest again, and talked about the fact that he just wants to be able to work on his cars, his hobby cars, and in his yard, without having to leave and go somewhere where he apparently has currently paid storage fees. And while that's understandable, that is not a criteria for a variance. There's simply nothing special about his property, nothing peculiar, that's making him have to comply with something that other people in the area wouldn't. One thing that came up at the Planning Commission was that two other homeowners in this particular neighborhood have structures that do exceed this.
Yeah.
However, those people built those before the city was incorporated, had incorporated that area, so they were grandfathered in. That's always there, I mean, that's how things work when you incorporate in a I mean, that's how things work when you incorporate in a city people that already have buildings there. You can't make them tear them down. But now that the city has incorporated that area, either the ordinance says means something or they don't.
Ms. Bertuzzi, you're getting close to your three minutes.
Okay. Wrapping up, so we're just saying he does not meet the criteria. It's a legal question, really, in spite of the matters of convenience that he's asking for this for. It's a legal question, and he doesn't meet the criteria.
Thank you, Ms. Bertuzzi. Any other citizen comments? No other citizen comments?
Yes, Mr. Stubbs.
Mr. Stubbs, take your name, address.
Yes, I'm Clot Stubbs at 2501 Gochay Van Cleve Road, and the young mayor is correct on all the things that she brought up. The thing that I do not agree with or understand is why this has become such an item for me to build this accessory building in my backyard. Again, only asking for it to be considered, as she mentioned, that some of my neighbors have buildings that exceeds the requirements in the Estee Willa Grand apartment, but why am I being, you know, frowned upon? For me wanting to build one that I have been willing to downsize, I've also agreed to, if it is approved, to utilize siding or whatever to make it aesthetically appealing to the Along with this, that access is behind my house. There's a road that goes from Gochay Van Cleve Road to the property, and I don't see where that's an issue. I'm not trying to get, I'm not trying to exceed the setback requirements of the five feet from rear to the building or from the side, from 10 feet to the side. I've spoken with my neighbor that lives right next to it, this door to me that has one of these, that has the building that was a little oversized and stuff like that, we have no problems. So I just don't understand why this is a big issue. Yes, I do agree that I did not include those, my separate garage and the storage building, but again, because I didn't think this was going to be such a hassle, because where I want to locate this building is not feasibly visible for anyone except for the people that's going from Gochay Van Cleve Road to their property, and their property is setback behind where this building would be located. So I just don't understand the issue, and what I do see is a legal, it's going to be a legal item, but, you know, we're not going to, you know, just, I don't think that's right. You might use other terms, but I believe that it is.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. Any other citizen comments? Do we have a motion?
Can I ask for a couple of clarifications before we do a motion?
Sure.
You know, the, our item says 1,600 square foot, but then the planning commission meant it's a 1,200 square foot, so that would technically put it at a 286 square foot.
Correct. Well, I was hoping you would ask that. So to correct myself in the original presentation, it would decrease the size of the building to 1,200 square foot if he's requesting the 40 by 30, which would actually decrease the variance request to 286 square feet. That would be the actual number of variance.
Now, the next question is, is this 286 foot square foot based on the 20% of the available backyard or the 50% of the primary structure?
Based on the 50% of the primary structure, because the ordinance says whichever is less, and that is less.
That is a less.
Yes, sir.
Now, and this 286 square foot is also based on the carport already being attached now and considered part of the primary structure?
Correct. So if approved by the planning commission's recommendation, I would not be able to issue the permit unless the work is done where the carport is attached.
Okay, so that 286 is with the carport, and that actually incorporates, does that incorporate the overall square footage of the primary structure also to increase that amount? And that's where we get to the 286?
That's why I increased my number off of was the carport being connected.
As part of the primary structure?
Yes, sir.
And 50% of that primary structure is where we come up to the 286 square foot?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Danos, do you agree with all that?
Yes, sir. I have a question.
Mr. Stubbs, we already are, we're in council comments right now.
All right. Okay. I would like to hear what he has to say, because we did get some...
We get a motion and a second.
Okay.
A motion and a second, and I was going to let him speak.
Well, it might have something pertinent to the motion. I mean, we just, we just provide some initial information.
Mr. Stubbs, stand up and state your name and address.
Again, Clot Stubbs, 2501 Gochay Van Cleve Road. I also have a pool house that's attached, that's not attached to my house, which is, Mr. Ankersen brought out the square footage of that. Now, I can take and also have a breezeway between my house and this structure as well. This is an extra cost to me, but it gives me the square footage that I need. Now, if I need to go this route, unfortunately, I would, because I think I'm being, you know, frowned upon for what I'm looking for. Again, I don't think I'm asking for anything that's out of my league or shoot that's going to detract from the neighborhood of the location of where it's going to be and what I'm going to, what I'm looking to build, to build an hour. You know, yes, when I initially incurred, I was going to build a metal building, but now since the neighbors have, you know, mentioned that that would not necessarily be aesthetic pleasing, I went to the hardy board siding, you know, to do that, to utilize that material to this building. Again, I'm not going to be using it as a commercial anything for my own personal use and things of this nature. So just wanted to add that in, so I can add those square footage, add that square footage in with the breezeway, and then I won't need the variance. If that's the route we need to take, that's the route we can go.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. I was going to bring that up, so you answered it for me. I didn't have to bring it up in my...
Could Scott elaborate on that?
Well, my question to Mr. Ankersen earlier, because, one, it's a shame that somebody owns property and has to go through a bureaucracy to try to do something when the adjoining property owners have the same. And I tell you the same, if you've not been down the road, the same type of structure in the front yard, not the backyard, the front yard. So I want to reiterate that. Also, reiterate that his property is adjoining a commercial piece of property, meaning a Dollar General. Any type of commercial activity can go on that parcel. But here tonight, I asked Mr. Ankersen, because if he, our Unified Development Ordinance, if he attaches them to the home, that's home structure, so therefore, he don't even have to be here tonight, and he can build his thing, and he didn't even have to go through all this. If he meets the rear setbacks of the 20, 25 foot?
25 feet.
Yeah, 25 feet. So he would meet it if he came forward and attached all these to make on the structure. He don't even have to be here this evening. So I just want to remind everybody of that.
What is the maximum he can build legally, a little over 900 square feet?
So legally, it would be 1,812 square feet is his total allowance for accessory structure, based on the square footage of, 50% of the square footage of the home. But what I wanted to say was, you were asking if he would be able to do that if he added the pool house, and so I did the math. The pool house is 392 square feet, and you have to cut that in half, that's 50%, which would be, it would leave, he would still need a 90 square foot variance if he attached the pool house. I just wanted to cover that out. Of course, he could always decrease the building size a little bit and get rid of that.
How much?
90 square foot.
90 square foot?
90 square feet. You would have to decrease the size by 90 more square feet.
That's less than 10, but you'd be able to do it by right.
Right. And just for clarification, these other structures on the adjoining properties that are grandfathered in, if they were ever to be destroyed in a hurricane or something like that, they would actually have to come back in and apply for a variance in order to rebuild if it was over 50% damage, correct?
So the homeowners that have that, those structures there, I don't know if they're aware, if they ever have any damage or anything like that, they would have to come apply for the same thing.
Does that include a burn down or anything?
A burn, any damage.
This damage is beyond 50% substantially damaged, and that would be correct.
Well, Mr. Stubbs, I appreciate you listening to the neighbors' concerns and trying to address their concerns, and I appreciate you trying to have, you know, stay at home and enjoy your property that you invested here in Gochay, and you own more than one property, and we appreciate your investment here.
I have a question.
Uh-huh. Go ahead, Councilman Gillett.
The workshop of 320 square feet and the storage shed of 185.6 square feet, are they, are those permanent structures? Are they on raised foundations? In other words, permanent meaning concrete floors?
The shop is, is on a foundation. The storage building is on center blocks, you know, and it's moved, it's moved, so it can be moved.
Did you hear that, Councilman Gillett?
No.
The storage unit is on center blocks because it can be moved, and the other structure is on concrete foundation.
Okay, aye. If you had any intentions of eliminating the storage shed and putting it in the old shed, you would be less of a variance you'd be asking for in accordance with what's been presented here.
Yeah, if he even did that too, he wouldn't need to be here, and he could still build his structure.
When I'm looking at this layout, you've got almost the whole yard completely filled with buildings.
Well, that's, that's not true. That's my drawing, because my drawing is not scale.
What is, what is your acreage?
Yes.
What is your acreage?
About an acre.
About an acre.
So do we have a motion? Do we need to make a motion if he's going to change what he's doing?
Well, I think he needs to understand whether he's going to get the variance or if he needs to change what he's doing, so...
Mr. Stubbs, are you going to change what you're doing, or you want us to? What do you want us to do?
Say again, please?
Do you want to still try to apply for your variance or go back and do your other and be able to do it by adding your breezeway's attachment onto the home structure?
Well, before, at this point, I think we're just going to go and the breezeway, because if I bring in the breezeway along with the pool house, all this adds to my square footage of the house, okay? And the breezeway is a part of the house now, so that square footage, however long that distance is between my house and the pool house, that's going to be added as well. So that also lowers the square foot minimum that's required, so I think we'll go.
And then if you attach the new structure, then it all is combined to the house.
That'll give you another 90 feet there, the breezeway will.
But I think I just, you know, I'm trying to, what I would like to do is to make this easier for me and not affect my neighbors. I don't, you know, I'm not here to cause a discontent situation, but I also want people to, you know, look at my, you know, request here and why I'm asking this.
Right.
You know, I'm not asking this just to be a butt game.
Right.
I'm asking for this, you know, to make my life more convenient as well.
Right. And we appreciate you working with some of your neighbors, and they were very receptive of what you were doing and appreciated you communicating with them and making the changes you made, and they did relay those sentiments to me.
So as I understand it, you're going to go ahead with the breezeway and then reapply for your permit for the building?
I think Josh has a couple of comments to go on.
Most likely, yes. I've got to get with my, I've got to get with my guy that does the construction, find out, you know, what it's going to take and what this is going to cost as well, and then we'll go from there.
Yes, sir.
Because this is going to boil down to one or two things here. Is he like, "Build this like this?", and I hate to say this, or I could move out of the city of Gochay. You know, one or two, because I want my building to be close to me, not halfway across that. I have property over in Gochay Village, and I could build a building over there, but I don't want to have to get up and leave my house to go do this or come back at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, whenever I get done doing one thing. That's one of, that's one of my things, Bob. And I don't think you should get this for what I'm about to give.
I agree with you 100%. And I mean, just like we have three attorneys here, I work at a law firm, so I can state it. You ask all three of them something, they all going to give you a different answer. So, go ahead, Mr. Danos.
I would just suggest that if he's going to amend or withdraw his application, that maybe we table this item, and if he's going to withdraw, maybe he could get a refund on his application fee if he doesn't need a variance or whatever he wants to do, and we could go that route. If he wants to continue or revise his request, then we could continue on the same application.
Do you want to do that, Mr. Stubbs?
Can I go on a better, please?
Well, if we... Do you, the thing of it was, was if you wanted to go through how you were going to go through, and we weren't going to vote on it, that we would, we would just table it, and then if you wanted a refund, we would refund you your money.
Well, not necessarily that, but he could also investigate the cost of what it would take to put the breezeway if he wanted to go that route, and if he decided it was, it was cost prohibitive to you to go that route, then we could bring this up again at a later meeting to vote on it, or we can vote on it now, whichever way you'd like to go, sir.
I'd like to go on it now, because I know it's going to be a cost, because, you know, the cost to just attach the carport to the house is a cost that you want to take away from other things, different stuff, and so now it's an added cost, but, you know, I guess this is possible.
What he's trying to say...
Also, being doing business, I guess.
If it gets voted down now, you won't get your refund, is trying to explain. If it's voted down now, the variance, you will not get the refund, but if you want...
And it won't be tabled.
If he wants to table it and bring it back, and you decide what you want to do with the breezeway, then you won't need the variance, and we can refund you money for, that you applied for this.
And we'll table it.
You want to table it.
All right. Based on that, I'll make a motion that we table agenda item number three.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman College to table it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman College?
Yes. I agree with you, Mr. Stubbs. We've had some circumstances in the past with these variance requests, and, you know, these variance requests are coming, and they've got signatures from all their neighbors saying no problem, no anything like that, and I'm sure what you bought in the build is going to be very conducive to the eye. I appreciate everything you do. You come to our council meetings constantly. You're very aware of your community, but we have to also follow the rules of the law and cannot put the city in an opportunity to where we may have a suit against this in the future. I'd love to work with you the best we can. I know our planning commission, our planning director wants to, so let's see what we can do without having the lawyers involved. I guess that's the best way to put it. Thank you.
This is something you got to do. Councilman Gillett?
I heard lawyers involved. The mayor said three different answers. Uh-oh. No comment. No comment.
Yep, because that's what you'll get. Councilman Jackson?
I wish he would be on this, and I know he's got our support in the legal.
Thank you. Councilman George? And Mr. Stubbs, like Councilman College said, you know, there is ordinance and everything, and just like you heard, we were furnished information. The planning commission received some information from the legal counsel. The council received a little different information from the legal counsel, and then you've heard Ms. Bertuzzi, who is legal counsel for your property owners, who obviously have an issue with your, whatever you might put there. But you're going to work with us, and we'll work with you, and the planning commission was supportive of you, and we will, and we're glad for your investment here. Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries.
To table.
To table it.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Gollum. That brings us to business, Agenda Item Number Four, Consider a Request for Five-Foot Variance to Sideyard Setback Requirements for an Accessory Building in an R1 Low Density Single Family Residential Zoning District 2338, Sandalwood Place, GPC Number 22-19-VAR, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Department has received this request from White Hoover for five-foot variance to sideyard setback requirements for an accessory building in R1 Low Density Single Family District. Now, we'd like to build an accessory building that would be five foot from the side property line. The required setback from the side property line is 10 feet. So, in this situation, I have, I did visit the property. He does have a protected oak tree that he's trying to prevent damaging with the foundation of this building. I feel like he would get into the root system, and it could possibly damage the tree. Also, this lot is particular as far as the stormwater flow, and I feel like if he puts the building or the ordinance, since he would have to put it, he would disturb the flow of the stormwater, and, in a sense, it could cause damage down the road. Uh, so therefore, I did tell the planning commission in my presentation that I felt like that it wasn't particularly peculiar lot in, in that aspect. The planning commission recommends that city council approve the variance as presented because of the unique character of the yard and the protected trees. City council may approve the variance request as presented. Approve the variance request, and change this or deny the variance request, and again, I will include the complete packet and the excerpt from the GPC meeting dated 6/22. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments? No public comments. Do we have a motion by council?
I'll make a motion that we approve planning commi, planning commission's recommendation as presented because of the unique character of the yard and the protected trees.
We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Gollum?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen, for working with the citizen to accommodate him. All in favor? Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Gollum. Number, um, five. Consider a request for a special exception.
I'm still here, you know.
That's great. Consider a request for a special exception that would allow an accessory structure to be located on a lot without a primary structure in a R1 Low Density Single Family Residential Zoning District 1711, Trade Winds Drive, GPC Number 22-15-SE. Mr. Ankersen.
The planning department has received this request from Christine Clark for a special exception that would allow accessory structure to be located on a lot without primary structure in R1 Low Density Single Family District. So, this is, not to confuse, but the applicant came in wanting power to this boat house structure on this parcel of R1 district. There is no primary structure. Our unified development ordinance does not allow accessory structures on a lot without primary structure. So therefore, for me to approve power to this, I said you're going to need to get a special exception to have this accessory structure with no primary structure. So that's why we're here asking for this, so they can actually get power from, for us to release power to this, this boat house. Uh, so I've included the criteria for a special exception as it's outlined in 416 for the UDO. Uh, I've actually included the applicant's responses to those criteria and the staff finding. I've also included the UDO definition of hardship, and the recommendation from planning commission is that planning commission recommends that city council deny the special exception due to lack of a hardship being proven. The city council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception, and change it to the non-special exception, and again, I've included the complete packet and the excerpt from the GPC meeting dated 16/22. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you'd like to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any citizen comments? If we do, stand up, come to the podium, stand up, state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Lynn Norman. I live right next door to the Clarks, and I'm very careful with my neighbor, George Shember, that got to notice about this property. You know, I'd like to present some pictures to Mr. George, who I talked to on the phone. That's some there, and I also have some more pictures for you that I didn't get the belt. These are the pictures that he has cleared some of the property. I'm just going to, ah, if you want to look at them.
I'll just go in there. Yeah. So as soon as we come to the floor, I'll.
They can have it.
Oh, okay, thank you so much.
So, my question is, if, uh, Ms. Clark, uh, wants to put power down there, she had people down there fishing the other night on the property. So, uh, I don't understand the reason. He's got a shrimp boat down there, a couple more shrimp boat down there. He's cleared out some of that property, and all debris up until this other piece of property, and has the city got the right to haul that debris off from this property, which you don't get, no lights, electricity, probably not. I've always gotten along with my neighbors, except here in Gochei for over 60 years. I had four neighbors that, in my house today, I live in now. She went to the guy that brought the property from, said, I don't like her. I don't like, I've always gotten along with my neighbors. I don't know what they're trying to prove. And also want to ask you a question. Is it fair to go on some other people's property, which he has used, he is using this day to hide money on somebody else's property? He is using it. He has some pictures of that, and I told Mr. George about that. And that's all I have to say, so I hope you retain it. But I have to say, not to offend them, because they are my neighbors, and I do want to get along with my neighbors, but I don't want him to take advantage of the situation. And I hope you all will understand that.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
I'm Josie Johnson. I live on Trade Winds Drive at 2317, and I'm for them having power. I own a boat. You have a boat. You want security, you want lighting, um, you know, safety, you know, just, um, to prevent, uh, like, we've had problems on our boat, and we have lighting, and also, um, cameras, okay? And also, isn't it fair that if you give a power to one person in the city that doesn't live there, that it should be okay for others? Because my neighbor has a little, okay, I used to live in the house while I was building my home, and it had a garage. They split the garage with the lot and sold the house and the lot separately. Okay, while this happened, the person that owns that lot lives across the street. He's able to get power on that property for a boat house and for lighting and cameras. Okay, so I think the Clarks should be able to also. I mean, it's only fair, you say you want us to enjoy our property, when, you know, when you come in on a boat at night, it's nice to have lighting. I mean, this, it doesn't sound like much when you're not a boater, but it's a peace-of-mind safety, you know, because boats are just about as expensive as homes. That's all.
That's right.
And, okay.
Thank you. Did you want to say something else? You've still got time.
I was going to show you that they have power, but I don't think, you know, if you want to see the power box.
We, we know about that.
Well, that, okay, thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
My name is Jack Green of 701709 Seacrest Drive, Detroit. Our property's big, Mark's and ours, and I can see across my vine, there are property over there. And I don't see anything particularly wrong with it. He's got, um, equipment over there, boats on trailers, and, uh, with our, years back, when John Gatlin owned it after Katrina, I went over there and looked at a few things. The, of course, the house was gone. Slab is still there that was under the raised structure, and he had a small shop, John Gatlin had, and he also had temporary power there. I don't see the big deal. And, uh, these people are paying big-time taxes because they can't claim homestead exemption, and, uh, they bill there because they're going to build, what, 25 feet up? And, uh, so that's my point there. And, uh, I don't know why anybody'd have objection to it. You got boats, you got to have power, that's the way I see it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bren. Any other citizen comments?
How you feeling, Bill? O.W. Brown, we live in 1705 Seacrest, also 1701 Seacrest, in, I've washed away in Katrina. I've been there for 30 years, right next door to Mr. Green. One of the biggest deterrents for crime on the vine, and there's a lot of riffraff that runs around on the vine, is the light, and I don't understand why, when John was there, it was a lot lesser, people wanting to find by my house, just by the lights and him having power down there. So I don't, I don't understand, I always thought there was still power at, at his old boat house, but I understand there's just a power pole, and Jason's trying to get the power turned on. And if anybody's tried to charge the boat, uh, you know, battery on boat, for him, you'd have to go 300 yards to get power to charge the battery, so I wouldn't see a problem with it. I don't afford lights to be right next to that, that is Seacrest, so I don't have any objection to it. So, just wanted to state my case.
Thank you, Mr. Bren. Any other citizens? State your name and address.
Can I?
Let her go, and then we'll let you, because she had a minute left, so.
Um, Lisa Ardenly, I actually live 3306 Ed Tatt, but I actually walk all the way around the block twice a day. I, I believe they should have power, because I agree with the situation about boats. You got your boat there, you want power, you want lights. I think part of the issue seems to be how things look. I walk past there every morning and every evening. My dog believes you can only go one way in morning and one way leaving, so I'm going from both directions. I see what we're looking at. All I can see from the street is the driveway. You can't see what's back there, whether they've got boats, or junk, or anything. You don't know what's back there. So aesthetically, it looks perfectly fine. It looks like woods, that's all you see. There's nothing ugly back there to look at, and, I mean, I see it every single day. All I've seen is they cleaned things up, they've made things look better, they've gotten rid of a lot of the falling down trees from Katrina and things like that, but that's all that's happened there. And all they want is power so they can secure their area, and I think they should have it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. John Gatlin had a home there at the time.
State your name and address again.
1716 Trade Winds Drive. Mr. John Gatlin had a home there, it was destroyed during the hurricane. They don't have a home here. So, I don't understand why we need electricity there. He works on his boat at the house right next door to me. He's using the property next door to him, which just now belonged to him, and I think he's just taking advantage of the situation. That's all I can say. It was a junkyard, basically, except in the July 2nd meeting, here, in his chambers.
Okay.
That's all I can say.
Any other comments? State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Christine Clark, 1712 Trade Winds Drive, also 1711 Trade Winds Drive, also with Jason, we were supposed to do there, so, and, I'll just add it, 2319 Highway 90. Um, was here, you know, we, we requested for the special exception of the Trade Winds Drive. We purchased that with existing boat house and did a meter, power meter, about five years ago. They all was there when we bought it, and, you know, uh, over the years, we fell in love with the neighborhood, so started planning on building them one day, but then time passed by, we, we noticed in the property would flood with storms surge and hurricanes, and Christopher and Zita flooded the property all the way up to the road, like, to the gate, that's super hot. So, yeah, that, that, you know, that for us, you know, we're like, okay, this is, you know, this is scary, so we ended up buying the lot beside us up to here. But then, you know, when we were trying to, you know, planning building there, um, the house in the front came up for sale. I mean, that's already built, and the material is so high, and we don't have to go through all, you know, and it's faster, and it's, the price was so very good. So we ended up getting that, and that's just right across from the 1711, which we were trying to turn the power on. So this really must like an extension of our yard, to just cross that, and then, you know. Um, so, um, I'm like many others that live on that area, we, we were there because of the water, access to water. That has been our way of life. We used to live in Moss Point and Waterfront also. We used to have eight boats over there. But when my husband, my husband, he was a dock master, also licensed captain, and he lost his job, we sold everything we had to start the business, trucks added. Every single boat we had, we sold that, we sold our rental property, everything, and we, you know, we started moving back here, we started going back to the water, so we found the Trade Winds property, which is perfect for what we love to do, you know, and, uh, we found out we can turn up the power unless we build a house, which we, you know, we were supposed to, but then Zita and Christopher, it happened, and I have a video picture over here, how far the water went, so you all know that I'm not making it up, not taking advantage of the situation. We landed there, that's why we keep buying the property close to that. We didn't go nowhere. There was property bigger than what we have now in Ocean Spring, half of the, half the price that we were, we pay, you know, we were paying on that trade user, but we, we still chose Gochei, because we love it, we, you know, we love it here, you know, even though some people don't love us, but we like it here. Some of, a lot of our neighbors, you know, are my customer, and they like that we moved there, and it was so happy. Every time they walk, we're like, you know, seeing family and friends, except for, I guess, some people, which I don't understand. I don't understand why they like, I don't know, I can't understand what we did to them, but they're not happy, but we tried. I even bought flowers, put flowers on that fish tank property, which did not really match our decor, so I had to try buy some flowers and plant there in our front yard, maybe that will make them happy when they see it and we come out of their door. Guess what they told me? Those flowers are pretty, but because you put pretty flowers in your front yard, I don't see the mess you make in your backyard. Those are expensive. What do you do for a living? I wonder where you get your money? You sure got a lot of money. You don't work, he don't work, how do they know that? We just moved there for two months, and we were building a little, we were staying in the house more than we normally do because we just moved. We were still moving, actually, we were still fixing the inside, that's why we got a good deal, because we had to fix stuff inside the house. We fixed our efforts, we didn't afford. We fixed our efforts, we didn't afford extensive house, so we buy what we can afford, and we try to fix it ourselves, okay? So, we, you know, I try to not think about anything else, but when you see somebody trying to picture of everything, you have something in your property, they take a picture. You try to remove it, because you think it's not making them happy, they take a picture too. When he was on the road, they took a picture. The guy's working for me, said, "Ma'am, it's Christine. Somebody was taking a picture of us putting these links on the rope. Well, that's where it's supposed to go, just make sure it's not going to be touching the rope," you know. But they did what they did, and like, every time I have somebody outside, they're worried they're going to get taken, their picture taken. I feel like I'm getting stopped, pretty much. And the words that was said to me, I feel like I'm being harassed, but I don't, I don't want to do make a big deal out of it, because I just got there, they're just trying to know us. And we want them to know us, you know, we want to know them too. There is something in there, I don't know, but we were just, what we're here for is just to turn up our own. So, we can run everything that we need to do. We need to maintain that property, and there's a lot of times, we have the generator so loud running over there. Now that we live right across, I realize that thing is so loud. I wonder if nobody ever complained yet. I was, I was expecting that would be their main concern. You are running this super loud generator the whole day. But no, I got other concern, like, I guess, power tools and treatments that we use, so we can feed our family, we pay our bills, we try to survive in this economy. And look, we put everything, everything we have in Gochay, okay? We were discouraged by a lot of people before we moved here, but we believe in Gochay, okay? Believe in the water, they talk about the water. I don't care, I can buy me the filter system, filtration system, you know? Oh, your toilet, you can buy a white toilet. You gotta buy the yellowish toilet, because it's going to be yellowish in here. I don't care. I mean, I'll get a yellowish toilet, I don't mind. You know? Because we love where we are at, we love the neighborhood. They are so good people, you know? Almost everybody of them, you know, on the lot. And, you know, and, you know, we've been here in Gochay, our business has been here for almost eight years. And at first, I felt like we were feeling like ignored and all, but lately, I've been feeling like motivated, I'm feeling like, you know, some inspirational words from Mayor, you know? For the person, somebody said something, "Oh, thank you, oh, that makes my day." I'm like, awesome, they know we exist, but, you know.
Ms. Clark, we feel your opinion.
Oh, I mean, I have somebody in my yard that day that somebody talked to me, I'm not going to tell them.
Do you have, um, you, are you, because your three minutes are up, do you have anything very important?
I'm probably asking for your.
I have, I have one question. I have, I have one question for you. Do you live at 1712?
Yes, we do.
Do you own the property?
Sir?
Do you own the property you rent?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, I was trying, I was trying to find out where it was, because I'm on the wind map right now.
It's that blue house.
And it's still on.
See, that meant to be, because I like everything blue, and that house is already blue, so like, wow. But anyway.
When did y'all buy that house?
I'm like, running free this year.
Okay, so it hasn't gone three years?
Yes, and that's why I just not applied for the special ex, the exemption, because, you know, now I have prison, you know?
Yeah, okay.
I don't want you to all go beyond the buck, because, just because I want power. I have prison, you know, you don't have to.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other citizen comments?
2378 Trade Winds Drive. The boatwheels she is, he's got. He got to be grandfathered. The house got taken away, but it did. He's got boats, he's used them, he pays taxes in the town. He's got a business, and he owns an extra property, a house across the street. Plus, he's got a wife and a daughter, they love to go out in the park. Well, any of y'all guys send y'all a wife and a daughter? This is a happy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Yes, sir.
You've already spoken, you've had your three minutes.
We're not going to go any more character assassinations against each other, so.
Yeah, we've heard everybody speak, and everybody had three minutes, and we allowed you to speak twice after you already spoke once. We've heard everybody's comments, and we've all had three minutes. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to consider a special exception that would allow an accessory structure on a lot with primary structure, R1, low density, single-family residential zoning district located at 1711 Trade Winds Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC case number 22.15-SC.
That's to approve, Mr. Councilman Anderson?
To approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Albin, any discussion, starting with Councilman Albin?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes. We have a waterfront piece of property here, it's got a boathouse and a dock, and it's existed since before Katrina. The house was washed away by Katrina, and accessory structure is still there. And we're having to allow an exception on the, an accessory structure that's been there since before Katrina was there. I don't understand that, to get power to it. Mr. Gatlin had power there before his house washed away, he had power there after the house was washed away, at the accessory structure for the boathouse. A boathouse without a power source to it, or the accessory structure, not so much the accessory structure, but the boathouse itself, without power, it's like me not having power at my boathouse on Subbayou. It'd be useless for me to have a boathouse I have with boatwheels in it, and I can't have power to it. It's going to take a freestanding power pole, I assume, to allow him to have power there, whether it be a motorhome, or whatever it is. But we have ordinances already to prevent them from putting motorhomes or anything else in there. We've already covered with ordinances. There's no reason this man should not have power, or this lady should not have power to their boathouse to supply what they need for their shrimp boat. I do have concern about the property and what it looks like. Everybody says it looks fine from the street. I would also like the property to look good from the water, because a lot of people come through there by water. And that, that's something we need to pay attention to. I don't know what it looks like myself, but, all being said, they need power for an accessory structure that's been there since before Katrina hit. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman College?
Yes, it was brought up during somebody's comments, that there's another house along that street that across, that has primary structure across the street from the waterfront property, and they have power? Is this on Trade Winds also? I'm just trying to figure out.
Yes.
Hit him. Who said yes?
Yeah, in the back, and.
So, it is, so, so basically, is there some sort of stipulation we could put? I understand the special exception, and it carries with the land, correct? The special exception, does it carry with the land or not?
Nothing.
No, it does not. My concern is if they, because they work, they live across the street, I'm fine with that, they're in the area, but I'd like to, I don't want them to be putting other accessory structures on this property. I'd love that for them to have the power to their boathouse, to utilize that property as their, as their land for the boathouse, but then at the same time, don't want shit getting strewn off across the place. So, is there some sort of amendment that we could add to that special exception that requires them to where the only accessory structure allowable on this property is what's currently there?
They would have to get a permit.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Currently, if they wanted to build another structure, would they have to?
Build power.
So, there's no additional, no conditional use note, the variance note?
Well, to put another accessory structure, it would require a special exception.
It would require another special exception?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is not a grand all be all for any future accessory structures? This is just to get power strictly to this boathouse?
Well, the memo says for, for an accessory structure, which is one structure, so.
And.
If they wanted to put another accessory structure on there, that special exception would not apply to, to accessory.
Let me understand something. They were asking for power.
No.
They were asking for temp, for power for the boathouse, but we told them that they can't have it unless they get an exception for the accessory structure.
Correct. You're, to clarify, y'all aren't approving the power, you're approving to have a structure without primary structure.
Yeah.
I will, I can, I, we grant the power through Cedar River, once we go inspect, make sure no safety issues are present, and then we will release the power to the structure. And I will add that if this structure had power now, we, we wouldn't cut it off. It's only because it was, it's a non-conforming structure, and once they become vacant of power utilities for 180 days, then they lose their grandfather.
What, and I don't know if you know this off the top of your back, or somebody, what's the approximate elevation of that property? Is it sitting probably about?
Eight foot?
Eight foot?
Katrina got 5.5 foot.
5.5 foot, so it's pretty much unbuildable. In order to build something up there, you wouldn't even be able to put a driveway to get to it, because it would get inundated with water. So, you'd have to be probably, what, 24 foot with a free board?
I don't know.
Yeah, go there. So, I mean.
23, they get miles in Katrina.
So, but we're going by what city ordinance, isn't the free board is up on it? So, basically, I mean, this property could almost be deemed unbuildable as far as a purpose structure, unless it's raised way up in the air.
I know there is, there is a.
There's a Cedar River Power Pole and Transfer, move the property back, it's already there.
And. All you need is a.
Well, it's supply power.
Okay. What I'm trying, what I'm trying to come up is, I don't want to set a precedent for allowing power in accessory, or accessory structure in R1 zoning district, but I think, being that they live across the street, despite the fact there is right away in there, it can almost ambiguously be considered a, you know, since they're right across the street, two properties across the street. We did approve an accessory structure recently for a similar situation where the property was not buildable. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Deloitte?
He's asleep.
I think you got disconnected.
No comment.
Okay. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
Um, I would second what Adam said. I agree with him.
You know, I, for one, as, and I would like to recognize, we have some planning commissioners here on this evening, and shame on me for not recognizing. If you served on the planning commission, or if you did serve on the planning commission, will you stand so we can just thank you for your service? Mr. Stubbs, you served. Mr. Stubbs, you served?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover and Mr. Stubbs, for y'all's service to the planning commission. I, you know, and Ms. Yancy, we've battled this, you know, trying to figure out how to address it. And as you, we've heard tonight, we've heard the positive, and we've heard the negative. And both have good points. They're not, none of them are bad points, and they're both hard decisions to make when you're having to make a decision relating to this, because a prime example, just for everybody to know, in another residential MERC area in the city, that was in my ward three as councilman, we had homes destroyed in Katrina. Well, these people wanted to start getting a power pole, and on the weekends, they wanted to bring their RV down and just start camping there every weekend. So, that became an issue to the residents who held homes there, because they were bringing all these RVs there. So, it became a city issue with the planning department. So, I just want y'all to see from both sides, we see the positive and we see the need, but we also see where there could possibly, not that the Clarks would do this, because they, we appreciate their investments, and as Ms. Clark says, I do go by there and toot my horn and appreciate them supporting our community and our events. So, I, you know, I just think we need to come out to a way to figure it out. Mr. Hoover, he's in the same, he's got a neighbor next to him in the same situation. They owned the lot across the road from their home, and it's a small lot, it's not even probably buildable, really. And he just wanted a boat shed with power. But unfortunately, we told him we couldn't do it, because it wasn't allowed. So, I just feel like if we as a city maybe can look at it, our, request the planning commission to look at it with Ms. Yancy and our planning director, Mr. Angerson and our city attorney, and us try to address this, so it don't become, you know, whatever happens tonight on this case will happen. But I do think we have, as Councilman Anderson said also, and Councilman College, we have areas like down by the Horn Island Grill, where there's a bulkhead, and they need lighting, and they need a security camera to monitor their boat. They don't have a house there, but they landscape it, it looks like golf course grass out there on their property. But they can't have power there, so then now they can't keep their boat there. And they do pay high dollar taxes on the property. So, we got to be mindful of them, but also look out to the neighbors who live in those neighborhoods. So, if we, I would like to ask that we look at that and come up with some way so we don't, the residents that fit in maybe a situation like this don't have to keep coming before this.
Can I ask one last question before we vote? Would it be feasible, from a legal standpoint, to where the special exception is only valid as long as they're owning that property across the street? So, that way, you know, they can't in the future say, well, we're going to sell this house, and we live right across the street from it, but we're still going to utilize this property as a boat going back and forth and property and so forth. Being that I'm trying to combine this in a contiguous kind of way.
Yes, sir, you can, you can certainly put conditions on special exceptions, so I think you can do that. We need an amendment to the motion.
I'd like to make an amendment that this special exception is valid while the applicants are owning the property, inhabiting the property across the street.
We have an amendment to the motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Councilman Anderson? Any discussion on that? Councilman Albin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman College?
No.
Councilman Deloitte?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
No.
I have no comment. So, we need to vote on the amendment? All in favor? Councilman Deloitte?
Aye.
Motion carries on the amendment. Now, we'll, we have a motion and a second on the original motion, all in favor? Councilman Deloitte?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. and Ms. Clark, just know that you have to abide by the Unified Development Ordinance on Property Care Maintenance. So, there's rules on that, so if you have any concern with it, just get with Mr. Angerson, and he can explain to you how to do it. Okay? Thank you all. That brings us to Business Agenda Item Number Six, Resolution Directing the Placement of Leans on Properties Located in Gochay, Mississippi, for Fees and Charges Incurred by the City of Gochay to Abate the Unsafe Conditions of Vacant Structures pursuant to the Mississippi Code, Section 21-19-111. Stop presentation, Mr. Angerson.
This is, we're bringing this before council for approval, due to the fact that this is, housing county is requiring us to present it to them to actually do recording on the leans. We're aware that you have already approved these abatements, and you can prove how to assess the damages, I mean, the cost, but the county does not accept that. They want us to come back after the work's complete, put this on the agenda for y'all to approve, and take these resolutions to the county, and then they will actually place the, the leans.
Do we have to do this over and over, every time we get a group of abatements?
Yes, sir, and just to make y'all aware, we do have, how many do you have, have a bring back four of them?
There's 15 more.
15 more coming.
Those are the ones prior to the.
Those are the ones prior to these, because we have our whole lot.
This is putting them in the form that the county will accept.
Okay.
And then from here on out, once we catch these fifteen up, then we know now how the county likes it, and we will do them as the work's done, and we'll put them back on liens and put them on these so many. These are just.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Angerson. Any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion with Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Deloitte?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
Scott, you've been busy lately. You're the only thing on our agenda.
No, we've got some other things coming up.
Thank you, Scott, for your work and making sure so we can get our taxpayers' money back. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us.
Aye.
Oh, thank you, Councilman Deloitte. Sorry about that. Business Agenda Item Number Seven. Authorization to advertise for bids on the construction of the nanofiltration water treatment plant project. Ms. Stenat?
Uh.
Or is Ms. Yancy going to do it?
Well, actually, I, well, I was going to, which is kind of generally what it was, and turn it over to the engineer, but this is actually, we have been working with the Corps to finish up the Corps' comments. The project then has to go to technical review, which is another part of the Corps. But while it's in technical review, they wanted us to go ahead and go out for bids for these, not only bids, the inside of the treatment plant, because they're only building the building. But they need the shop drawings in order to complete the technical review. So that's what we are doing, and the skids are something we are providing. So this is to go out for bid for the skids that go inside the water treatment plant building. Brian, would you want to? This is Brian Vargel. He's been kind of heading up this with Wagner.
Well, Scott, that's a call. No.
Brian, why don't you introduce everybody with you?
I'm Ryan Rollins, I'm Wagner Engineering, and I've been working on this project for a good while now with the Corps of Engineers. But this portion is just that the actual nanofiltration unit that's going to go in is going to be four huge skids that's probably about fifteen by fifteen, about forty-foot long each one. So it's four of them. So it's a lot of pumps and piping and all that, and it's got the cleaning place product. It's a bunch of tanks, too. So it's a lot, it's not, it's a pretty big contractor, but it's the major part of the whole nanofiltration unit from its construction and everything. So it's, it's a big piece. But this is just for the equipment owner, but Corps can put it all together, put it in. But what we're going to get out of this is some shop drawings that the Corps is going to be able to put that in their bid documents so that their contractor will know exactly where to pipe things to and from. So there's no question why it's going to be constructed. And that's why it's two separate parts. And we did it in two separate parts. We could, it would have been a lot easier just to have one project and build the whole thing, but the Corps adds an extra percent fee for their maintenance of the contract and everything, so we took this out, so that we took that deal out. But, same.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce the rest of your team that's here this evening to the citizens?
Good evening. And Carlos Bell.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank y'all for coming down to visit us.
Would you say your name once again? Would you say your name once again?
Carlos Bell.
Carlos Bell.
He's our new area manager. I live here.
So you're ready?
Ready. Some water, huh?
Oh, you don't live in the ocean, just the area?
I live in, I live on the coast.
Okay.
I'm from here.
Thank y'all for coming.
She left. We should have had you before they.
They did clean water bad.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
Clear water.
Mr. Olson, you want us to take your name and address in thirty minutes?
Mr. Olson, 2504 Robert Higgin Drive. Is the ionization plant still going to be utilized, or is it going to be decommissioned from the office?
It's going to be utilized. It's a one NGD ionization plant. So this will provide an additional three million per day, which will total four. So with the addition of the LAR, nanofiltration plant, which we just got federal money for, of the LAR, well, it should make all the water in Goche clear, both north and south.
But there will be a division between the two plants then?
This plant.
Is there what they serve?
Couple of miles.
It's not in one spot. It can either go to the ion or to the mass. Now, the thing about the ion exchange is that you've got to regenerate the resin, and so you get clean water for not know how long, but then you got to get, you got to turn it off, so. And then you go back between, not the main, it's a redundant, it's basically four NGD, but one's going to be sitting there idle. So you have three running. This will either be cleaned out, picked up and all, picked up and all, so it's going to always have water and clean water.
It'll be a 24/7 water clarification system in lieu of the system we have now that has to be backwashed almost daily.
And it shuts down. The current one shuts down.
The exchange, you can have it, like if you have really high water, man, crank the whole thing, you get the ion, same thing, the day they go, and you turn it off at night hour, it'll be examined, it'll work out.
Paul, how many million per day is the LAR going to be?
Was that all, Mr. Olson?
Was it two?
It's one NGD.
Mr. Olson, was that all you have?
Yes.
Okay.
I still didn't understand.
A million?
One, okay.
Got to work well, still.
Okay. Any other citizen comments? No. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman George. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Just based on this, we're going to get the shop drawings for these nanofiltration systems to get the piping in, but are they going to be able to, I guess, fabricate and store these assemblies until such time as the pre-engineering metal building and slab and everything is placed?
It's going to take probably about twenty-four weeks to manufacture these. So, but it's in the Corps contract, so they know that they're going to have to unload and store it somewhere. So they'll, it'll be their contracted responsibility to do it. We don't like to do anything with it.
Okay, so once we award this contract, we're pretty much out of it as far as installation or anything else. We're just purchasing the material only. Gotcha.
Yeah. Government, Corps called the GFC, government furnished equipment.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Deloitte?
Yeah, you're government.
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
Oh, thank you for the one involved. I know this is a very big, cumbersome, difficult project, and it means a lot. We need it, I hear it every day. And I'm ready. Thank you.
I just want to thank all the staff who works on it, and I don't want to forget anybody, but thank all of you and our engineering firm and our public works that works with y'all, service provider to get you information. But also, I want to thank the key players who helped secure the funding. At the end of the day, we wouldn't be able to do this without our Congressman and our Senator Cindy Hudson Smith and Congressman Palazzo and Senator Wicker. They've all played a big part in that. They've all supported us. And so if you see them out and about, make sure you thank them because they see water clarity is a big issue here in Goche, and it also affects economic development. And as you heard from our resident, she still came here even though we had brown water. So we thank her for giving us that chance. With that being said, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Oh, Councilman Mike.
Councilman Deloitte? Gee, I guess I'm going to have to get that over here. Business Agenda Eight. Authorization to prioritize and submit three applications to Mississippi Department of Marine Resources for FY 2024 Title and Public Access Funding. Ms. Stenat?
Yes, sir. It's just time to apply for Title and Funding again, so I'm writing for three projects to you for prioritization. We have to prioritize each application that we send in. We've listed them here in recommended order for Mary Walker Valley Parks Project, which includes Town Hymns Park and George Martin City Park. The second priority is Shepherd State Park Improvements, and the third as a rehab boat launch and finger pier and potential parking on Fairway Drive. They've been listed in this order due to likelihood of funding, and I just want you to discuss and prioritize those for us tonight, please.
Thank you. Any public comments? No public comments? Okay. Do y'all have a motion with them prioritized for the staff?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, in the order that was presented by the staff. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
We submitted for the Boat Rant of 2023 also, correct? Okay, just wanted to make sure. I thought so. I just wanted to make darn sure.
Councilman Deloitte?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George? Okay. Good job meeting those deadlines because they surely have been sending the emails to us. All in favor? Motion carries. Councilman Deloitte?
Aye.
Motion carries. Look, I'm more important than getting your comments. That brings us to.
You got my comments.
No comment.
Business number nine, approval of the docket of claims. They've been provided to us by our city clerk. They've been online. They're in our packets. So everybody has been furnished them. Do we have any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the docket of claims provided that all entries thereon are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman College?
No.
Councilman Deloitte?
No.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman George?
Nope.
All in favor? Councilman Deloitte?
Aye.
Thank you so much. That brings us to our Consent Agenda. All items are approved in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. One, approval of minutes from regular council meeting held June the 7th, 2022. Two, receive May 2022 privilege license report. Three, receive April 2022 finance report. Four, authorization to accept a donation of 12 basketballs from Phil Torgeson, a Goche resident, for the City of Goche's Baco Park's new basketball court. Approval of, five, approval of an agreement between the reigning champs Football LLC and the City of Goche to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to participate in the NFL flag football program with the added addendum. Six, approval to renew the professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for our general services engineering. Seven, approval to accept monetary donations for the City of Goche's Cruising Through the Decades Event. Eight, approval of a contract addendum of Mississippi Department of Marine Resources to extend the grant deadline for the Shepherd State Park kayak and boat launch. Does anybody want to pull one?
I'd like to pull number four for discussion.
Councilman Anderson pulled number four, so anybody want to pull anything else? Do we have a motion to approve one through three and five through eight?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. All in favor? Motion carries. Councilman Deloitte? Thank you. That brings us to Consent Agenda Item Number Four. Authorization to accept a donation of 12 basketball girls from Phil Torgeson, Goche resident, from the City of Goche's Baco Park.
Yes, I understand former mayor Phil Torgeson donated 12 basketballs and a basketball stand, and I understand the basketball stand was destroyed?
Yes, it was not commercial grade. And so what happened was, kids being kids, all the basketballs were being used, and they're shooting them. Then little kids got on the thing and started playing on it, and it fell apart.
Okay, they were just playing on them. It didn't deliberately destroy it.
No, they were just climbing on it and riding each other, riding it. So, basically, so I told Chastity to go get a ball-mounted basketball, what do you call it? It's called a basketball lock. That's a basketball lock. It will mount to the brick column, and we can actually lock it if we need to lock it.
Oh, great. That sounds great.
It'll save how many basketballs?
Okay, I misunderstood. It was deliberately destroyed. It was an accident. They, just kids playing on it.
Right.
Oh. Councilman Anderson might not have saw the email. Did you see Ms. Yancy's email about?
Yeah, and I must have misunderstood it.
Oh, okay.
I took it as though that it was torn up deliberately and not accidentally from playing on it. Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Okay. Do we have a motion to authorize, authorization to accept the basketballs?
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Councilman Deloitte?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our Study Agenda. Number one is Discuss Citizen Comments. You've got three minutes. Come to the podium and state your name and address.
2501, Miami, Dan Rose. I just have a quick question concerning the bill paying for your water bill. One of my favorite sections. Is the drop-in one bill no longer existing?
No, sir. It's been closed for years.
Okay, is it going to be opening up, or, you know, cost when you come to pay the bill? To me, it's a suggestion, you know, to have to walk in, you park the car, there's other people waiting to come in, or you can just drive through it.
Yes, sir. I wasn't here then, but I think they closed it due to the clearance. Somebody jumped in here. The clearance for when you drove through is too small. They closed it, and now due to the auditors, they've also closed the, you can only use the night drop for night dropping. In other words, it cannot be open during, busy during the day according to the.
But it is open for night drops.
Yes, and on a weekend.
And on a weekend.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, that's my comment. Any other citizen comments? Okay. That brings us to our Council Comments. It's our second meeting of the month, so we'll start with Councilman Alvin. start with Councilman Alvin.
Clearwater, I thank you again for going above and beyond on that situation on the power point. Thank you. I'd like to thank Waitrose, Clearwater, and the city departments for your hard work, appreciate it, couldn't do it without you. So ahead.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
I'd like to thank Wagner Engineering folks for being here tonight, and I'd just like to remind you to keep a fire lit under the Corps of Engineers, if you could please, keep this thing moving forward, because our water is clean, but it's brown, and it's, this can't wash white clothes, you can't do this, can't do that. Thank y'all for being here, that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson, Councilman College?
It's going to be short, sweet ditto what Councilman Alvin and Councilman Anderson said.
Thank you, Councilman College, Councilman Delott?
Ditto.
Thank you, Councilman Delott. Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I want to thank the police department, they did a great job at getting things slowed down, the issues that I had in my ward, they really worked hard, and I got things to look like it should look in the community. And the cameras, the things that we have on Baco Park, they really sent a signal out, excuse me, to those that want to get in trouble on the park. They sent the clear message, you know, now I can see the change in the atmosphere, of course, you know, I'm out there all the time, I don't care who's out there, you know, so I'm out there with them and paying attention to them, but I can see the definite change, a lot of younger people are coming out there, you know, really enjoying it, and a diverse of people are coming out there to enjoy the park as well. So, you know, it's just, it looks like everything is moving forward, I'm just, just kind of like giving everybody the information of what's going on in Baco Park, you know, because it's really like the center part of my ward and all of our wards in that, you know, Ward three and two and one. So, you know, it's just, it seems like things is going well, you know, I'm really feeling confident in the future of this ward, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
Oh, so I thank David Weber, and I know you had some help in it too, so, but that presentation, I'm really impressed, I mean, it was really good.
It was good.
It feels good to know you guys are leading the department very well. It's for the lights that you discussed on top of the car with the blue on each end, is that something we need to purchase, or is that like something you add on to the light? It's a feature that already is... It just hasn't been used? Yeah, so basically, you have to hit a quote, break every program. Okay. And activate a button under switch. Could that come out of the money that we just were awarded? The $500?
Yeah, we haven't been awarded again.
Well, if we get awarded. I don't see it being that expensive, all we got is access to the light box. Okay, cool. Because I like the idea of, you know, residents, like, you know, we're not getting patrol, you are, you just don't recognize the car. Thank you, Fire, everything you do. I remember the emails that we had gotten previously about repainting one of the fire engines?
Repainting?
Or painting it the blue with the logos, is that still going, or what's the update on that?
It was an order.
It's an order.
It takes a while.
Oh, we ordered, oh, we ordered a brand new one.
Yeah, we're cutting it right here until next year.
Okay, I was remembering wrong.
It just takes so long.
Okay.
We're in, we're in the engineering phase.
Okay, all right, cool. Other than that, I'm really excited about the water progress, I'm going to put an update later in my group on Facebook, let everybody know what's happening with it, but other than that, we've been here long enough.
Is that all you have?
That's it.
I just want to give a shout out to all of our staff, because y'all all do a great job, and our service providers are doing a good work with the staffing they have, and I know they have staffing issues, but you're doing the best you can do on limited staff. And our engineering services, we couldn't get any projects done without you all, so thank you all for your hard work and your commitment to Goche. But this past week, we had a, and we had been wanting to do these, neighborhood watch, get them started, and I just want to thank the police chief and his whole command staff for organizing, they had started one up in Hickory Hills, and we kicked off, and Councilman College and Councilman Anderson and I were there, and y'all did a great job, and that meant so much to the residents, and they look forward to that, and we will be doing them as the chief said in other wards, and we will be announcing them for them to come hear the same spill and get informative information, but thank y'all for spending your night, evening with us, educating our citizens, because it did mean a lot to them. Also, thank our recreation department, y'all been doing a lot of events, and I want to encourage our citizens to follow us on the app or on the community service page and like and share it, I mean, just don't look at it, I encourage you to like it and share it, because that gets more interest, so they, more people see it, so I encourage you to do that for our events, and I encourage you to attend all of our events, or at least try to attend one every now and then and support your community, even if you don't have children, you can go out there and be a part of them, that means a lot to them, because a lot of them don't have mentors at home and need a mentor, as Councilman Jackson said, and as I get messages constantly from educators in the school system about Baco Park, how they drive past there and it reminds them of old days of youth out there, it just, it's heartwarming to hear those. Also, I would like to share an email with you all that I received that said, hey, Mayor Von, I wanted to praise your wonderful team members, I needed some assistance and understanding of my property. I'm Felicia Nichols Coleman, and Patrick Fagan from Code Enforcement was so helpful in explaining what I need to do to get this situation resolved. I truly appreciate Patrick's knowledge and the time he took to help me. My home is in Goche, Mississippi. I purchased the home many, many years ago. I now live in Louisiana, and I used to rent it, but renters sometimes will destroy your property. I decided to renovate the property because I did not want to abandon my community slash neighbor. Goche is looking great. When I come home to visit, I stay in my Goche home. I like my neighborhood there, I was trying to improve the look of the property and did not want to just sell it. Again, I appreciate your team. May God continue to bless Goche and you and your fine team members. Thank you, Felicia Nichols Coleman. So I just wanted to share the positivity, we always hear the negative more than we hear the positive, but there is positive in your hard work, and I hate Patrick, I'd love, but I asked that you share that with us. I also will ask the board, you all received at your station, I received an email from the county this morning, the Board of Supervisors did an MOU, they, and a resolution, we had previously done just a resolution waiting for their MOU to be sent to us, so we need to, if we could have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Jackson County Board of Supervisors and the city of Goche, Mississippi, that was presented to everyone this evening.
I make a motion that we approved the resolution of Board of Supervisors, Jackson County, Mississippi, approve the execution of a memorandum of understanding to provide assistance to the city of Goche for the replacement of the deteriorated storm pipe, drain pipe between US Highway 90 and Old Spanish Trail between the properties of Jackson County Civic Action Committee and Goche Presbyterian Church within the city.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No.
Councilman Anderson? Councilman College? Councilman Delott?
No.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
Um, Adam, have you ever worked as an auctioneer?
I just want to thank our staff and our engineering mark with you all's hard work and partnership with the county, and want to thank the county for their partnership to address this need. If you drive by Civic Action, you can see their playground is falling in and unsafe, so we appreciate our Board of Supervisor, Ken Taylor, and all the supervisors for their continued help for the city of Goche and our citizens. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Councilman Delott?
Aye.
Motion carries. And last but not least, it was an honor to receive this morning a phone call from our congressman who continues to do work for the city of Goche, and you heard our chief touch on it earlier, but I can't stress the importance that our senator, I mean Congressman Palazzo, continues to do for us in Washington. As you know, the city's request was for $507,000 for the Goche Police Department for equipment upgrade, and it's been included in the FY 23 House Commerce Justice and House Subcommittee. This is a huge win for Goche, as it is a direct result of our continued advocacy and efforts in Washington DC by our congressman. He is in his longevity on the House Appropriations Committee. So once again, if you see Congressman Palazzo out and about in your, our community or anywhere, please thank him for what he continues to do for us and his partnership with the city of Goche. And with that, I do not have any other comments, I will let Ms. Chansey have her comments.
Come on, make your side, I have none.
It's been long.
And Emily, do you have any? Ms. Dickerson, our deputy clerk? And that brings us to our city attorney, Josh Mr. Dennis? No? Okay. Do we have, and thank all of you for coming this evening, and Ms. College, you wait back there. Do we have a motion to adjourn until July the 5th, 2022 at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George Jackson?
Yeah, don't matter.
All in favor? Councilman Delott?
Aye.
Thank you so much, you have a great evening.